Good evening, welcome to the May 25th. Spencer Board Education School Board Meeting, please join me with the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the agenda? Mr. Bracken, second, Mr. Maselli, all in favor? Four, nothing. Okay, we're gonna fly through this so we can spend so much time with Mr. Wood. Okay. So, a very exciting thing for us for our agenda is approval of the results of the 2021-22 budget vote.
Congratulations to the community, our leaders, the administrators, the teachers, the board for a successful budget. Now the real work begins for next year, but congratulations everyone in challenging times, it all worked out, thank you.
Awesome.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, first, Mr. Maselli, second, Mr. Bracken, any other conversations? I, I'll say that, that obviously, I'm pleased with the election part of it. But also, I'm very pleased with the turnout that we had and it was great that we had so many people, I kind of expected after the high of last year for the mail-in votes that we would be even lower than we were pre-COVID. And it was kind of exciting to see that many people come out for the budget and see that that many people believe in what we are doing as a district and believe what the administration, what the school is doing, what the students are doing. So I think it was a great thumbs up for everything, not just for the budget, but an affirmation that we're doing the right thing for our district. So with further ado, vote of four oh. Awesome, and privilege on the floor?
None.
I see none.
Motion for consent agenda to approve the classified and articulated agenda handed out.
Second, the stone, all in favor, four oh. Board of Education reports. I'm gonna be pretty quick, I was very happy to see that so many of the board members came for the election results and that was kind of exciting to see everyone here. And I am really excited for our Monroe County School Board Association annual meeting tomorrow where Greg did not, or Gary did not dodge the bullet and he's taken one for the team and will be the president of the Monroe County School Boards Association, is starting tomorrow, is that the?
It's technically at the beginning of school year, but
Okay.
We've near started the handle.
Okay, awesome, gonna be exciting tomorrow. And that's what I have. Lori?
I'll make a note of two opportunities, the community will have to see our biggest department in SM, one is on Memorial Day, the Martin High School, Martin High School band will be marching in the memorial day parade and also in the middle of the afternoon, we'll be playing off at the memorial park in the building, they're creating, I believe, at 9:00 AM. Anybody want to see that? And then also on the second, the high school is having a music concert outdoors, 7:00 PM, it's gonna feature the Friday jazz band, the jazz ensemble, the treble player, vocal bear. Bring your own launcher and look forward to seeing some of our students.
What day is it?
It's June 2nd, at 7:00 PM.
Where is it going to be?
It is going to be at the high school, unfold near the east gym entrance, just the south side of the high school, or the night now area and
Awesome, exciting. Anyone know where the parade starts? Is it West Avenue or?
We did studying, the kids are lining up in the subway plaza, the band is, and
Okay.
So it wants to start somewhere down in the middle of the park.
Okay. Mr. Bracken?
The only thing I wanted to try and make sure we get, word to Lee about the the association's training that she can take.
She's already signed up.
Sure, I know. That's it, I'll be, I'll be sure that
So, so she did choose the in person?
Yep.
Great. Mr. Maselli? Awesome. It's all you, Dr. Kissel.
All right, well, we have an intense PowerPoint here for Mr. Wood about the federal stimulus funding. And I'll just say that he and I and the team have looked this over and Ty is going to chime in with the instructional recommendations we have for some of the use of these funds. And the intent, I think largely, is an overview. And also, it will provide you a resource. Because there's a lot of details here, he's not gonna read you every slide, but if you wanna go back and reference something or, you know, he's taking it from different places where he's been learning more and more about this because it's kind of like being in the plane, trying to repair it while it's in the air, we're trying to do things on the fly here, but we're grateful, obviously, you know, Rick works hard and a lot of hours and he's taking a lot of time to try to learn more and more, and as I say, more information is still coming out, so, thank you, Rick.
Thanks. So, Rick, except that we're gonna have some elementary questions and some difficult ones and we accept the fact that we may not get an answer, but
Yeah.
Prime is where we're heading with the question.
It just highlights back at this point of, we are continually learning about this. The 18th, and that's where the majority of these slides are from, I'll reference the source, but the 18th was excellent presentation where they had two high official SED individuals share their knowledge base about it, and even they're still trying to get information about it. Unfortunately, I missed the Monday's presentation where they actually had a webinar of how to actually complete the application for this, what we're gonna call the SIRSa. So, yeah, again, big picture, Ty is probably gonna get to probably the most detailed of it, I'm just gonna try to provide you an overview of big picture, the different stimulus funding that's coming into the district. So, March 20th, pandemic adjustment, it's the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, or CARES Act. December 2020, what we call the SIRSa. Most recently, the March 21, which is the American Rescue Plan, I call it the RASR. And you can see the availability was all the way back to March 13th of 2020. Then I have an asterisk on the availability date. There's a provision called the tidings amendment, which actually extended these dates, so originally, it was September 30th of 2021, but that amendment extended it to 22, and they've done that with each of the three stimulus packages, and in big picture, there's the dollar and offset of then four of those.
Okay, so Rick, maybe a basic question, so throughout the presentation, it says we have to submit an application in the review process, but is, is that the number that we are going to get, period? Or is it gonna be based on our application and it could be modified based on our application?
Well, we'll get into this, but our application is gonna be for the full amount.
Okay. But, but is there a chance they can say, no, your application doesn't qualify?
If they, if they deny, so this is, this happened with a couple of, with the CARES Act, actually. We put something in, we didn't have all of the information necessary, so they kicked it back. We requested an extension, we resubmitted it and they approved it, well, that's the process that it'll go through.
Okay.
Rick, so I saw a lot of deadlines in through this thing, and I saw one with, like, yesterday. Where are we at with the deadlines that we really have to?
They're jumping ahead, way ahead of my Okay.
We get to us an hour's advance, of course, we're gonna read it.
Just to address that piece of it, Gary. Obviously, the CARES Act, that's already done, so I'm not gonna touch base on the slides on it. The second stimulus, the SIRSa. That came out May 10, it was required to be submitted, part one was required to be submitted by May 24. Dr. Kissel's already submitted that, we got, and that's what they call just an assurance, that's step one, it's two steps. Received word back that they've approved that, that allows now to what they call obligate, begin obligating those funds, okay. The RASR. There is no application at this point, we're still working on that, but, no, that's okay. You know, just blow through some So again, big picture, the state received one point, a little over one billion. And then they had, so the CARES Act, as is the SIRSa, it's broken up into sort of two pots of money within one. You have your, what you call your RASR, your elementary and secondary emergency relief, and then your GEAR, which is the governor's emergency, so he has a little bit more flexibility on that. All of the funding was really based on what they call the Title I Part A, which we are entitled to. Ty manages a lot of that. And under the CARES Act, this particular one had what they call an equitable service requirement, which means we needed to reach out to all of the private schools that our students attend to see if they qualified for some of this federal stimulus money. They did, we're working with them, but what that means is that we'll get the full reimbursement, but part of the expense they're incurring in that house. And that's not the case with these other two stimulus packages. So the SIRSa, again, in December. The state was allocated about four billion, of that four billion. The LEA, which is the local, the state, SCA is the State Education Agency, LEA is the local. The state had to allocate 90% of that four billion. And then, again, the governor had some surplus of that 10%, they had some discretion, they also received 72.8 million in what they call the gear funds, so you can see, this is the allocation, for Spencerport, the 90%, this first bullet equated to 1.7, almost 1.8 million dollars for us. Of the discretionary funding of this 395 million that the governor had, we were allocated 1.3 million. And then, as part of the gear portion of it, for us, that was allocated to be 245,000, so in total for the SIRSa Act, we received, we received 3.3 million dollars. This gets to the question Gary asked earlier, may come through the application, and I've covered this, but what I do wanna highlight is, unlike the CARES Act, these two federal stimulus packages, they are accounted for in the special aid fund. That's a completely separate fund than our general operating fund.
What does that really mean?
It means you allocate this and you track this completely separate. It's not really part of your budgeting process or what the community votes on.
Okay, so then also, it will not affect next year's tax gap and levy and all that stuff?
Not directly.
Okay, what's happening?
I'll get to it. I'm trying to be transparent. Okay, that was it for the SIRSa, do you have any questions other than what I just sort of led you down the path that you don't wanna know about? Okay, so our faster, March 2021. The state received essentially nine billion dollars of the U.S.R. funds, again, similar to the other 90% of that, we were required, it was divvied up under the Part A, Title One Part A. And with this one, there's a lot more sort of rules, regulations, of that 90%. LEAs are required to spend at least 20% of that funding to address learning loss, although I think that's a term that no one likes to use, I think we're using the term loss of impact of lost instructional time. But I'm gonna use learning loss, it's just easy to say. Okay, another stipulation of the RASR is that they were, states were required to have what they call set aside funding. We can see 5% was to apply out, you know, impacted loss instructional time, there it is. 1% to carry out evidence-based summer enrichment programs, and 1% for comprehensive after-school programs. We're not gonna talk about that, but in detail, but that's, again, part of that stipulation of set aside. Saying that. There, those three, you'll see that those are three grants, those are also gonna be required to be accounted for in the special aid fund. So again, the process for that, normally, you go through with you fill out all the assurances that they have, then you have to fill out what they call an FS10, which is the budget, and you have to fill out a budget narrative explaining how you're you're spending all those, that all has to be approved by the state. So, big picture, here's the numbers, the 90%, which is that first, that 90% of the four billion, for us, that equated to four million dollars. Of the four million dollars, schools are required to spend 20% of that, that equates 806,000 as a minimum. And then here are those three sub-grants. So again, 1% for summer enrichment, it takes the 129, same thing for the after-school, and then the balance is to be used at your discretion of 646, therefore, it equates to about 904,000 that we are required to spend, there's some regulations that we're gonna require to use that as well, so again, May 12th was when this information came out. The reason the deadline came off so quickly was that that, so the state could meet the guidelines need for the federal government so that we could begin obligating it. The first step, which we've already done, it was already submitted, we received word back, so we can begin obligating that funding. The second step is, once it's developed, that information will be made available to the portal and then we'll have to go in, fill out that application, submit the FS10 to the budget form along with the budget narrative. Okay, any questions before I get into some of the eligible expenses?
So, I guess almost, I don't, you don't have to go all the way back to the first slide, but, but when they talked about 90% LEAs, so does that basically mean 10% is staying with the state, is that what, when they keep saying that 90%, it's not 90% of what we're getting, it's?
It's 90% of what this total state pot of money was. They had to allocate that and use of that, 90% of that had to go towards schools that fell under the Title I.
Okay, and the other 10%?
The other 10% was discretionary, the governor is actually, in many cases, has identified that he wants to send that to school districts. So, if you were to go back to the Yes, see where it says here, SIRSa RASR2 discretionary allocation, so of the 10%, he still had money left over. Now, I know some of the money went to their administrative costs. I don't know specifically, but a lot of what the governor did was part of that 10% that they didn't have to specifically allocate under the Title I. He did use to help fund education and instruction.
Which just showed a different line item here.
Correct, so here's the required, 90%, this is his discretionary amount that he used for the U.S.R. funding, and then this has been here funding. Which is again, a separate pot of money.
So, so how could our, the 90% be so close to what the discretionary is, so is it that our district got more than other districts?
There may be some, I don't have all the details of how they did it, all they usually say is that it was based on the Title One Part A. It's a good question, I, I don't have any of the supporting numbers to get that.
Which, I'm okay.
Would you like me to have him reduce it?
No, thank you.
Okay, so again, big picture as far as eligible expenses, and again, when Ty shares his portion of this, you're gonna see, this is where we're spending a lot of that money, but remember I shared with you, there's two pots of money within the SIRSa and the CARES, one is the gear, that's the governor's portion. These were the six categories that you could spend money. We really highlighted, at least with the CARES, they're very liberal, in my opinion, three through six were the areas that we're gonna be looking at. And again, you can see they're very, very liberal, very water-based.
So is this the full statement, just that for, for like number three? Is that a summary or is that the full statement?
No, that's the full statement. This, this and these slides, well, they're taken directly from the application. So what happens, again, here's the here's the stipulation of how you have to spend it, we allocate a dollar amount to it, and then we have to supply a budget narrative that goes to show how we're doing that, so, you know, protection of education-related jobs, if we were at a point where we were saying we were gonna lay off positions. I could have applied that, I did apply that in here. Now, there's 15 eligible expense areas for the RASR. I'm just gonna, training and PD, purchasing supplies to sanitize and clean facilities. These are things that we're focusing on, providing meals to eligible students, so again, with the work that Gary and his staff have done, if we so choose, we can allocate some of that funding to gear. Educational technology, providing mental health services and supports, activities related to summer learning and supplemental after-school programs. You know, Ty in instruction offices, Jamie goes through and it's a hiring process, we offer summer programs that we can use to apply towards this. Addressing learning loss. Getting into school facility repairs and improvements to reduce the risk of virus transmission. You can read them, but, I mean, look at 15, other activities that are necessary to maintain the operation of and continuity of service in LEAs, and that's pretty broad.
So, so back to number seven. The food services was at a loss because of the meals or the free, so can some of that money go to recoup that, is that an eligible?
It is.
Okay.
So what would happen is, that's a 2021 expense. We're gonna identify that, as we go through and we start making decisions about what we're gonna, how we're gonna use these funds, that may or may not make the break. So, before Ty gets into his proposals, these are just some of the things that we're considering, thinking about as we begin to say, how can we use these funds, so I'll share with you later tonight, there's, I say 1920 transportation expenses, what's happening is that the state has made a decision about what is an allowable expense for transportation in the 1920 school year, so we may, we're already talking with our auditor, we may be able to go back and recoup the expense that's not able. So again. The CARES Act for us was 611,000, we probably spent close to 700,000, we've been tracking all of those COVID-related expenses in the same codes for this reason, so again, we can go in, see if we can apply some of this year's spending to the grant. 2122, I'm pretty sure we're probably gonna still purchase items that are related to COVID, I mentioned the summer program, Ty's working with with the instructional staff to see if we can expand that. Julie just came forward with what they call roof hatch fans, Jonathan just sent me a quote on it, so again, reopening of school, that's what the focus is, reducing the risk of transmission and facilities upgrades, unfortunately, I was not able to partake in the Zoom call that Jonathan Nelson had with our architect, but these are just some of the items and I don't have the specifics on this, we just had the conversation today, so these are some of the things that Jonathan Nelson and Lobella discussed about ways in which we can address air filtration, reducing that risk going to over 13, all of the things that were really highlighted in the beginning of the pandemic. The biggest aspect for me is, does this require SED approval? That's the guidance that we don't have, is how does this work with SED and the special aid plan? So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Zinkwich.
Thanks, Rick. So, the ideas that we're proposing right now, obviously, they deal with personnel, you know, from the instructional side. And the reason why it's important that we wanna present this to you this evening, searching for your green light, because we have to then hire set individuals, and now is the time to do it, I know that Jamie's chomping at the bit, so for the past few years, at the elementary level, we have been targeting, been trying to refine our efforts with the response intervention, so what do I mean by that? So, as you know, there's three different tiers. Tier three receive the most amount of services. And a tier three student in one building may not be the same tier three student in another school, so that's what we've been trying to utilize data to ensure that if a student profiles a certain way based on the quantitative feedback that we receive, that we track that we are consistent then with the support that we provide them. Eric?
So, basically, what you just finished saying, how is a tier three student in one building different than a tier three student in another?
Well, they're not different, but they may not receive support because the way that we staff our buildings. You know, we're, we're looking to make some requirements to the staff in those buildings to provide more support because there may only be so much access from the RTI provider to provide that assistance and that support to students, so here's what I mean by that. So you may have a student that scores at a specific benchmark that may be deemed tier two in one school, and tier three in another school, simply because of logistics and because of personnel to support them.
All right, so they typically are still the same qualified tier, we just don't have the people to serve it.
You would think so, but no, they were not the qualified tier, that's what we're working on to refine, so I'm just trying to give you a little background of what we're hoping to do here, and so I think with this now, we're looking to move from RTI to an MTSS approach, so multi-tier systems of support. And that term is more universal, I would say, K-12 versus RTI, which we have really classified at the elementary level. So we're hoping to revamp these efforts, knowing that we've been working on this for the past few years, so us analyzing the data, us getting benchmarks of what would, how would we classify a tier three student, how would we classify a tier two student? So we've been working with teacher and intervention specialists to help us with these designations. Just to ensure that we had consistency from building to building to building, because what we would ask is this is what we're doing, and in response, we would say this is not how we do it in this school, or this is not how we do it in our school, where really, the response needs to be, this is how we do it and spend support, so these are part of our efforts with this. So our proposal is to internal hire for MTSS, so teachers on special assignment for up to a three-year period. And so, this is just a really brief overview, we've created a four-year plan of our efforts on making this move from RTI to MTSS, and like I mentioned to you, it started two years ago. Eric?
So with the four-year plan and reading this, and they go back to the classroom at some point. But in the short term, we have to hire backup teachers for those classrooms, you think? How, what does that look like three, four years from now, when we have quote-unquote excess capability? And we, we have to start saying, I'm sorry, but thanks for working here, but now you're gone.
I think it's a really good question, so we could do it two different ways, one, if we deem that a student who wasn't eligible for tier three services in a school, perhaps we have that additional staff now to provide it three years from now. Or, as we go through this, and we're really looking to create systems, supporting our teachers, shifting that mindset, utilizing data, building a series of intervention strategies, you know, it's, it's a really systematic process that we're encountering, we're about to embark on. And so I think in three years' time, when the funds go away, we believe that we'll have attrition through retirement, so natural attrition. So that's one option, so where it says up to three years, perhaps we know based on our personnel that one building might go an additional year with an additional coach because of, they're not quite there where we need them to be. And then that other building, with then, that coach would kind of fill in for an individual through natural attrition. So it's not a perfect science, and you will see that through this theme here. So it's not a perfect science, and you will see that through this theme here.
So, so the goal is, is after the, the, the three years, the, the TOSSAs will.
Return to their.
Plan themselves out of a job.
Correct. Yep, okay, yep.
Do we have TOSSAs in each of the K five buildings already?
We do not, we have two instructional specialists. Each instructional specialist, uh, cover two buildings each.
They're technically TOSSAs also, they're throughout the classroom, they're.
Yes.
Just a basic question for me, what? What is the impact to a student when, when a TOSSA is involved? Trying to figure out how this whole. Well, from a practical perspective, it has.
I think if you were to use the, the lens from RTI or M T S S, really that tier one type of approach, because tier one's the type of quality of instruction that all of our students support. And our TOSSAs are instrumental in creating. The curriculum, working with team leaders across the district on refining that curriculum. Ensuring that we're implementing it with fidelity, making sure that we're also collaborating and then delivering that, so I would say tier one instruction is the biggest piece. Um, I would also say too that all the legwork that our TOSSAs do in terms of crunching the data, providing interventions, providing support. I think last week's a perfect example of the impact of our TOSSAs when we're delivering the fourth grade curriculum. And in our efforts with C R E, uh, they work hand in hand with the teachers, provide them the assistance and support, so. Everything that we introduce at the K five level. Our two current instructional specialists are involved in the discussion. In the delivery, in the communication, and then the implementation.
So will each of the, there, there will be a TOSSA in each elementary school. Um, i- is it the plan that that TOSSA will support just that school, or is it a? Or haven't you got that far of, of what the big plan is going to be?
I think a primary role would just support that school, but there'll be a lot of collaboration among the six TOSSAs. Along with Principals, Chris and myself. Team leaders, intervention specialists. Teaching assistants.
I think one of the goals of, of response intervention has been to try to help regular education teachers. Look at ways of teaching that reduce. Uh, the likelihood that students would. Classified in special education. A student with disabilities. Because in some cases. Maybe the repertoire of a teacher isn't. Broad enough to understand how to deal with certain kids and then. And then the answer is, well, we'll. We'll get them classified and somebody else will deal with them. So I think it's really building capacity in teachers to understand. How to teach in ways that reduce the dependency on special education. It's not like we think special education is bad, but we just think that sometimes it's, uh. Used prematurely. So this is really to help keep building teacher skills. So that the students can stay in as much as possible in regular education.
Same to the, sort of the positions as well, you know, whether it's your question or from a stone's question. I think that if you look at students that are sitting before our, our teachers, so one individual might have a comprehension struggle, and one may have decoding, when they have fluency. There's a whole different set of, you know, actions that need, a teacher needs to embrace. In order to provide support to that student through the M P S S model. And we're not there yet in terms of building all those interventions, building all those strategies, supporting teachers through this. Knowing that, you know, their effort in this work is really just to increase. You know, our entire district in terms of not only awareness, but also building and access to these resources, so not only rebuilding capacity. But also be to support our teachers and the daily work that they do with our student.
Along that line of that, for the daily work, um, where do you? I mean, I kind of get where the term is, but where do you see, you know, a sophisticated teaching assistant? Playing a role, given, you know, the past year and a half, that these students haven't had real good contact with adult help, right? So where do we see? Perhaps instead of four TOSSAs, having more teaching assistants in the classroom to provide that hands-on, one-on-one assistance?
I, I think that's another viable option as well, I think when we would all agree that teaching assistants are. Uh, a really integral part of our elementary. Environment, uh, they provide majority of tier two instruction, tier two support, so I think that's another option as well.
I would say. These are teachers that would be. At the top of their game. That are highly skilled, that, that understand the strategies that, uh. How to differentiate, how to use particular strategies that, that help students. With their academic work. So. They have more education, they have more experience, and they've demonstrated that they're highly skilled.
But does that impact more? The teaching staff versus the student? I mean, the students would be next step down, but I mean, if the TOSSAs are. Helping our teachers become better teachers, I get that.
Yep.
But again, that hands-on with students thing that's been missing for a year and a half. I, I'm just, uh, trying to figure out that what that balance is, and I, I'm kind of. Looking at all, they're kind of. See what that balance is of having people in, in the rooms that can. Help those kids that are having this specific issue or that specific issue versus the TOSSA who is helping the staff.
And I guess that's where my original question was, sort of coming from, when I said, what does this look like for a student? I want to make sure that whatever we do implement is, when we have the data, it's impactful on students as well.
So I think we're trying to build capacity among our teachers, and you know, you asked a question about what happens in four years' time, so I think if. You know, if we hired a series of teaching assistants, we'd have that same question as well.
Ty, what do you envision, you know, with one M T S S TOSSA in each elementary school? Would you envision, or can you paint a picture of what you think right now, this makes it be tough to answer? What would their day look like? You know, what do you envision with their day looking like?
It could be for them working together on. Preparing for the upcoming data day to support teachers as they analyze data and the work that they're doing directly with students, it could be coaching. Uh, teachers, it could be serving as models, it could be working, um, in small group instruction with teachers just to. Incorporate whatever intervention strategies we're trying to promote. Based on the notion of expanding an individual's repertoire. Uh, it could be, um. You know, it's, you know, I think it's endless really.
So could you see them perhaps also being going into classrooms and help them with small group instruction directly with students as well?
Possibly.
Possibly as this evolves.
Yeah, I would think as they're. Implementing a strategy, they're working with a teacher, and this is a highly effective strategy for X. Then they could co-plan, co-teach, and observe the effect, you know, how is this going, they could model. So they would be in classrooms.
Okay, cool. Ty, we've had a more historical meetings on what the current TOSSAs do. Forgive me if this sounds ignorant, it seems like there's going to be a certain amount of. Overlap between what the current TOSSAs do and what these TOSSAs. Or is it just that we don't know specifically what role these TOSSAs will play? It just seems like there's going to be some overlap in terms of the most.
I think that our current instructional specialists or current TOSSAs would be a part of this work. But I think this proposal would be exclusively to be working in an M G S S model. Where our current originals, you know, and instructional specialists. Are supporting our science curriculum with, um, E S P kids. Are refining our wonders, are working in, uh, with math expressions, you think that every other discipline that we have, you know, they're, they're involved in that process. We have, uh. We have a series of half-day release days that we call data days, and we also have a series of days that. Um, we have a schedule with each one of that elementary schools with each grade level. Uh, where we'll hire a series of subs, so let's say we'll hire three subs. Uh, for, for vernity, and it'll be split between two grade levels, so those subs will come in, provide coverage for. Our fourth grade teachers in the morning, our fifth grade teachers in the afternoon, so that they have time to work on and analyze the data in order. Provide accommodation or, or an intervention based on the child's profile. Because with RTI, it's a cyclical process.
Okay, so are you envisioning that for the next two years, we have to do more innovation than we already have?
We have that capability, yeah, we haven't really spoke about that, that far.
I think those are the deep, you know, that's a deeper dive on those particular days, but. Teachers more and more use. Information, data can be anything from state tests, which, which we're not using that much right now. But, uh, all other kinds of assessments, teacher-made and et cetera. To help them. Determine what are the needs of individual students, especially as they have more needs. Like tier three.
One of the six twelve, um, so, um. Similar but slightly different process, uh, for six twelve. You know, uh, as we're, it, this is really about, once again, building capacity and providing instructional coaching for our teachers. Um, in terms of enhancing their repertoire, supporting them in terms of, uh, their work with our major initiatives. I think when you look at, um. Obviously, it's no secret that Cosgrove has been identified as a targeted support and improvement school. And, but those students not only, um, currently attend Cosgrove, but they're also in the high school as well, so what type of. Um, pedagogical, what type of teaching should we be providing those individuals to enhance their learning experience to ensure that. Uh, they're meeting the needs that are set forth, uh, with our graduation requirements. So a little bit different terms of model, so, um. Instead of. Opening it up and allowing any elementary classroom teacher to apply, this would be us working with our teacher leaders. Um, at the middle school and high school, um, where they would receive some release time. Uh, to provide coaching to their peers, provide support, in turn, also receive coaching, so. Before we can expect our coaches to coach the peers, we need to provide them some coaching as well, so we're creating a partnership. Um, to support them in their efforts.
So this one is eight people?
This one is eight people, but really it'd be split between, so you would hire one E L A teacher who'd be split between the middle school and high school. So perhaps one year, uh, the middle school is receiving is, um. That teacher is teaching point four, and at the high school, point six. So eight people involved, but it's only four teacher player.
Oh, okay, so this is an eight, so, so far we're up to eight new positions.
Yes.
And this is another strategy that was designed to build capacity in our two. With the hope that that kind of paid off. In future.
Yes. We're trying to build teacher leaders' skills. You know, over the years, teachers, I think, have evolved from, you know, the, a department chair kind of model where. You know, they sort of work with the department around the talk high school. You know, we help order the books and plan when our tests are going to be and. Kind of organizational parts of the work. Whereas over time, we're trying to have teacher leaders be instructional leaders with their peers, again. The people that are highly skilled themselves. And they work together to improve the delivery and the way in which they instruct. So that our students can be more successful.
And in context of instructional coach, that's not something that we plan to use in our district. Supposed to be having a new concept of. Two other districts now that.
Yes.
Yeah, um. Some of the districts that I know that have that instructional coach model, um, find it effective. And very useful of the time, time well spent.
Yeah, you know, was it at Churchill?
Yep.
That was a concept that I helped develop there and. It really. You start to see skills really emerge, and when you have teacher to teacher. And you're, that's non-evaluative. Other teachers tend to feel, I think, safer and more open to. Uh, enhancing their craft.
Yeah, our instructional coaches at Churchill have done an amazing job, and it's because, it's an effective strategy. In our district, that's what was very good. But now a year point now, so where they're getting support from someone who's not evaluating it.
So now that's been ongoing. It didn't have like an end date.
Right, it's not brand new.
Right, so, so this one, unless we can figure out. Where that magic powder might come, you know, in three years, this has an end date.
I think the other thing we've talked about is, well, how much capacity have we built, how much dependency or need do we, would you continue to see? And then if it's something that is valued and you want to continue, can you look at attrition and other ways of. Of using, uh, existing funds without having it. A drag on your budget. After this time ends, with, all this is designed to be capacity building, but you may find. To your point, wow, we really like these instructional coaches, we wish they could stay, well, then you've got to decide. Whether you can afford them or if there's other ways to. To keep them in place. But these are people that already have, part of their day is what's called teacher leader. But they don't serve as instructional coaches.
The next one, uh, would be in additional positions, so this one would be, uh, supporting our efforts or transition, especially design instruction, this is. Um, specific to, um, area of special education. So, uh. State released two years ago, just, um, eight components, uh, Miss Spudsy has presented on S C I instruction, the power of S C I. Uh, would once again be us, uh, providing support to our specialized teachers and classroom teachers. Um, in terms of the model of supporting students with disabilities. And so it would be point five at the middle, elementary level, a five and point five at six twelve.
Trying to build on the consultant teacher model. That really, uh. Again, keeps students in general ed, more students as possible, instead of going to a fifteen-to-one classroom. Andrew's really worked with Ty to, to have consultant teachers working together so that. The, the students that otherwise would be with only special ed students are in the regular ed population.
You know, I see the point five, then, um. Where are we? Trying to remember last time, look, we had like over five hundred. Two, five, five, something like that.
It's not that high, it's about, uh, one percent, maybe twelve percent classification, right?
We're, we're over the four. Yeah, I just, I'm just wondering at point five. That's serving sixth grade levels on both, both sides of this, it is. It's sufficient, I mean, these are our. And unfortunately, speaking from personal experience, these are our most challenged students and stuff. And there is a lot of work that goes into. Helping them be successful. A, a ton of work, and I just don't know, I. I see we're hiring, you know, four COSSAs here and, and, and the coaches and stuff, and then when it comes to. The special ed kids were kind of, seems to be kind of like short present a little bit. Hopeful people.
I wondered this, you know, I, I would have to defer to Andrew or other people that know their current staffing levels and so forth. But because I, I, even the short time I've been here, I've seen the benefits of the consultant teacher and the. Moving from out of the fif- fifteen-to-one, and so it's like, uh. I looked, I looked at it too and thought, is that enough? But the other thing we talked about was, do we start here? And if, you know. Giving the support and knowing whether that model works, then. Add more, or do we go for more? Now? I think you're raising a great question, really.
The last one is designated to the high school, um, this would be a, you know, students proposal. Uh, this would be to support, uh, student, school management at a school level. And service liaison, so. Uh, it would be. Once again, internal hire. Would be, um.
So my question, I'm sorry, so many questions, Rick is very happy that they're all over here.
Yeah, he was hoping this would happen.
Good thing you didn't say any questions. I know when we had our recent issue. With one of our APs, um, at one point in time, there was discussions about. Do we need to worry about that? Do we need to backfill that in some way, and then the. And then the conversation revolved around, yeah, not so much, maybe the high school can do with what they have. And then the conversation revolved around, yeah, not so much. Maybe the high school can do with what they have. Now I'm here and we need a Dino student. So I'm just, if you can balance that for me, I've.
Well, this, this is really, I'll, I own this one because looking at it more intensely. And looking at staffing that we currently have, I felt, and this is an opportunity. We didn't know this kind of money was coming our way. So. When you have some more, you look at where, where would there be benefit? If you don't have more, then you have to make do. So I would say in this case. I believe that. Again, given current staffing, if this would help us build some capacity at the high school level.
And can you model or describe where.
Well, typically a Dino student is not necessarily certified administration. So depending on if a teacher happened to be certified administration applied for this, we could even potentially think about other work, but. A teacher can't evaluate another teacher. You'd have to be certified to do teacher evaluations and observations. So there would be, this person wouldn't be working with instruction. They'd really be working with behaviors primarily. School activities, but not not observation or instructional leadership per se. So they help with the day to day management of students.
So this isn't supporting instruction per se. This is more. More or less just working to manage the population of student population.
Yes, which will then allow other. APs in the principal of the high school. To focus on that instruction. It frees them up for more time on their work. And the leadership of the instructional, you know, the whole model that we're trying to do here. It frees them up.
So this Dean would also then Pam would support all grade levels now at the high school, correct?
Yes, and we're looking at, you know, leadership of the academy. Looking at Sean to look at who's, who's doing what and where are their skills best aligned? So.
So this. Position would necessarily support instruction more or less. How I put this nicely. So this is going to be. Supporting more of the kids that need the attention and the focus in terms of the heat. That kind of way here?
Well, I wouldn't say no to what you're saying. I would just say that typically, you know, different schools do different things, but. I think what's happened here in many schools is you might have an administrator aligned to a grade level. And so if I'm aligned to a grade level, I observe the teachers and, you know, perhaps maybe not that great level, but content areas. I, I have a disciplinary role, students that referrals come in or have issues. Sometimes it's based on the alphabet or however, or the grade level in total. Whereas the Dino students, again, they take, somebody's got to do the discipline and the behavior issues. Again, they're not going to only that. They would be, we'd want them involved in positive things with kids. In interaction with kids and in clubs and different things. But they would. Because that takes a lot of time and other people would have more time to be in classrooms to do instructional leadership.
So this is the, this is the dichotomy that kind of education is following in. Gifted kids virtually get ignored because it was the real thing. We mostly cater to the middle of the world because they need help, very often a lot of attention. So. This. Yeah, this, this is an interesting position because more or less. You're going to be more or less catering to the kids that need help. As outlined, and obviously there'd be some other parts of the world, but I guess I'm just trying to look at like the big picture. Really? How are we spending this money to help the student body? Whether that's by supporting the. Whether it's by supporting the teachers who support the student body? I understand that. This one just seems. I don't work in this environment, so I will defer to your expertise. I guess I'm having trouble understanding. That's all.
Well, I would, I would just say that I don't think this position has anything to do with not providing. Opportunities for enrichment. This is just part of how you get business done. It falls to administrators and.
I, I get, I get, I'm, I'm still struggling with the conversation we had not four months ago. You know, we're, I know, I think there was conversations of working with the high school administrations to figure out how. Things would work going forward.
And I'll just say that back to, at the time that we had that conversation, we didn't anticipate.
I, I get that. No, please, I understand that we didn't realize.
So I, I think we were going to make do.
Right. And I just, I'm not sure. I feel like we're making do. By going that path and figuring out something else to do. With this amount of money, whatever this amount would be. Because we're setting ourselves up for another. I'm going to say senior, mid-level administrative position, but we're saying that it's probably going to go away in three years, maybe sort of. But we're not sure. And it just, I, I'm just wondering if there's better. Use of that, of this windfall of money that we're getting. Versus, versus this, this position. I'm. I, I don't, I don't see it, but granted, I don't work day to day in a high school. So I, I just want to just, I'm having a hard time with.
So in the high school, this might be a tough question to, to answer. But with a typical grade level administrator, what percentage of their day is spent on student management? Would you say except, or said, this year I know it's different.
Right. Well, Ty and I both been high school principals, so I'll refer to you right now.
I think, you know, each year is a little bit different, you know, from the I to, I think junior years, it uses here to be perfectly honest with you. I'd say seniors and freshmen bring home challenges just based on, I mean, seniors and junior, freshman. About as you figure, I'd say anywhere from twenty-five to fifty percent of your debt. If you're doing it well, you're following up, you're reaching out with their families. If we're, we're looking to incorporate, restore practices, which requires some time, effort and energy to really. Dive deep into issues. I think the struggles that we find right now, the building administrators work hand in hand with our related service providers. Especially our counselors and our social workers and trying to navigate the different nuances that family space, I think that's growing dramatically, exponentially. On an annual basis. So I think those challenges are even more difficult than, you know, the tenures that I, I lived there in high school. Because social media too, you never know what's going to happen when you're walking into base, what was posted that you can before and I can figure out your entire day. So. I appreciate you posing the question. It's a little bit difficult to answer. I think there's been times when, you know, you want your. Building the ministry, including your assistant principals to serve as instructional leaders, and that's their primary role. I think with this proposal, it could potentially provide the principal an opportunity to really focus in on student management. Because I do think that with any given event that takes place, it could be coherent and better lead. So, so you could, you could envision this position here. Supporting the school management or student management and also leading other projects and initiatives at the same time. So this person wouldn't be strictly. Rotating kids in and out of the office, contacting parents all day, but also opportunities to lead other initiatives that are going to benefit the entire student body.
Yeah, and so that person also gets to develop relationships with students. So it's not just like, oh, if you go to the Dino students, you know, it's always for something bad. So.
Be managing all the extracurricular activities, it could be serving as liaison for with the athletic director for eligibility. It could be. Planning for homecoming, it could be doing, you know, managing, need to answer any event that requires outside, you know, vendors or outside users, so. With them taking on some of those responsibilities, we would hope that the plan would be done, the building. Administrators spend more time on instructional.
Yes.
Because you don't want to redelegate all those kids out of building administrators. I, I am having a hard time with this. You know, the, the toses, I can understand, I, I view that as an investment. For our students, you know, to really enhance the capabilities of our teaching staff. This, this one, I am.
I will share with. Two outside sources that were heavy administrators. To be fair, so that's why we're asking questions. It's our job.
Yep.
And again, there's an unspoken question that kind of is out there floating around, given we have a new superintendent coming in. Slide one. And this is a, an additional add to the administrative staff. And without any input from that first. And I know that happens. I mean, we got to keep moving the ship down the road, but. I'm just, I am really struggling with this.
So the expectation of this presentation was. To get a thumbs up to head into a direction, but there was no vote to say this is what we're doing. Is that correct?
I mean, it was two, one is to share with you. That was in those packages, some of the rules, regulations and amounts. And then, yes. Part of it, or this is a brainstorm idea. To share with you some of the thoughts that. Administration has come up with to see if you were. You want to cross them before.
So personally, everything up to this slide, I agree, like, like Rory said, it was. It's an investment. I had, not that I'm against this, but, but I, I think. Further clarification, further understanding of what this would be helpful to us.
So maybe just to get onto the next slide, this is part of our professor. The application is even out. Obviously, we've heard the concerns. I think we take this back, we analyze it, we flush it out. We drop it, we bring it back to you with, with other information, but at this point. I think what I'm hearing is, Rory, you are good with all of the proposals up to this point. And with us.
I will say that I still think there needs to be some more thought. On the number of the elementary toses, the, the special ed tose and how that, those bodies are split and stuff. I think, I get it. You're, you're trying to make this thing happen, but you've got to respond to all the requirements. But I don't, I think you need to, there needs to be some more thought put into. At least those two other, including in this one here. To see if, do we need four each houses or two that can click and each have another building before the two we already have. And then put that to special ed. Do we need a Dino student? Is there some other way to put a, a tosa that is. At the high school doing special project work and stuff for, for the student. I get it. You guys have been working damn and trying to get this stuff done, but I think there's more. Flushing out of some of these ideas. And, and thinking down that three year, three year row is where we're going to be if we implement. And how we get ourselves out of them, for lack of a better way of putting it, in the event that our budgets, you know, are just like normal. I'm, I'm concerned it's not, I know we're hurrying, we've got to spend this money, we've got to do it, but. Cool. And if, I think we just need, if there's a way to do some more brainstorming, way to do some more flushing out of these concepts. That would be where my head is. I'm just one of those.
So let's hit some of the other slides. I'm going to have to come back to it because I, I'm not qualified to even address this, but. Understanding is, if you don't move on certain things, Jamie's, Jamie's in a position, neither we can hire, which means we're not doing any of them.
Yes, I just. You know, we're, we're rushing ahead and I, I get it. I don't want us rushing into grabbing a hold of stuff that we now are then going to be trying to figure out what to do with it.
Well, you're not, you're going to love the next slide. Because some of the other requirements, and again, I told it. I'm like, we, we should be putting something on our website. As to a plan by each school year of how it will be expanded. With a prioritized spending on non-recurring expenses. Now, I, I'm going to share with you, I don't know how you do that. If, if any school district does this, unless they go out and do a major type of capital project or infrastructure. Where it's a one-time expense, which is what we're looking at using the other thing, okay? Don't have any of the guidance on that, but that's not addressing the impact of, of lost instructional time. I've got my expert information. We're good. I got, I got all bases covered. These are the, these are the areas that we are supposed to, to address. Again, part of it, the language, identify programs, utilizing funds, as expected, they continue beyond. So. There was a memo put out by the state already saying that they're not going to provide that template. Fortunately, the New York State Association of School Business Officials. Has come up with a, a template that we're going to use. We're going to have to go in and explain all of the things that you guys are, are addressing that. Listen, you've been struggling with it, you know, in all honesty, this, this was a. To get to where we are at this point. Like, and then this is our first step, but again, trying to begin to seek public comment. We're, we're getting your comments. And we're still working through, what's the best way to do this? I know that at the state level, they just put a document out and said, okay. If you want to, you know, put your two cents in, you do that. We haven't figured all of that out yet. Part of the other aspect, again. The two main focuses from, from SED, what I heard was. Develop a plan for the safer turn of into personal instruction. We have that already. The state has identified that because of our returning plan. That was already submitted to SED that we've, we've sort of covered that. So at least we can sort of check mark that. And then develop a plan for the use of the funds. What they're saying is when we submit our budget and they approve it, that's the plan. Okay, so this is really where the state sort of threw us a screwball because we are a district. That is receiving more than five hundred dollars per people. When you do that, there's a stipulation that you have to keep half of the allocation for two years when they want to be equally divided. So this is just an example. It's for illustrative purposes, but if we were looking at spending this equally. Over the same number, same period of time. This is what would happen. So what, what, right now, the state has a request under the federal government to say, okay, can we? We put a stipulation in, can we extend this to the end of the fiscal year? If that gets approved, then we're looking at the light blue. In other words. We have the S or minimum amount we need to spend, which is the entry and then the discretionary. Get to the one million of that, two hundred and one thousand, we spent on the learning loss. And now here are the additional grants. That we're going to probably need to submit plans for, so that we would spend approximately one point two million dollars each year. Just in our professor. If that request is not approved. Then the, the percentages as to how you have to spend the money over the three years changes so that. This is, I believe, twelve and a half percent, and then I think it's a little over eighteen and a half percent for the following few years. So depending, we'll know that in March of twenty-two, at least that's what they're saying. That's the deadline. So instead of spending one point two, we may be spending one point four in the first year, then one point seven in the following two. So I think you can begin to see the magnitude of what's being asked by schools, you know. I was really trying to lay this out. You know, I think this this picture is built for it. And it's really amazed at this stage. We are trying to figure out. The Cam's point earlier, you're sort of building this in the air. I don't think, I think it's very difficult to identify how are you going to address learning loss, but you don't bring staff on. And if you do that. How are you going to do it? So that I think Ty answered part of that. Through attrition. So that that's part of the goal is there are some people retired. We're not going to make additional orders because we're going to backfill some of those things. So it really full circle, you know, kind of when you ask, does this impact our operating budget? No, but yes. We are trying to be financially responsible, looking towards the future. To try to address everything that's occurring here, but yet still trying to identify the impact of the lost instruction. And I'll get off on certain.
So so with all the proposals that we saw for for toses, for deans, for everything. Does it fit within? That the budget, that the numbers that we have, or are we proposing more or less?
Listen, I mean. I just put this together tonight. I don't have those kind of numbers yet. My sense is. We may be close. That's just on the our pastor. To my point earlier, you know. LaBella shared that they're going to try to get us information by Friday. You know, so that is still an option. You know, if that's, you know, 2 million. You know, that's sort of has eaten like one pot of money, but we're still doing this. It's just, it's early. I mean, June 15th is when we have to have this sort of application and and talking to Dr. Kissel. I think we're probably going to. File for an extension in at least June 30th at a minimum to address the. They will input and to get more information from LaBella. Sure. I'm I'm hesitant to. So to move forward because I don't, I mean, there's good.
We're not, I'm just not comfortable with the concept of. Bringing to us is to better support the teachers, we can better support our students. There's going to be, fully acknowledge there's going to be learning laws, whatever you want. Kids have been out of school for 18 months roughly, it's going to happen. So I understand there are many bodies, boots on their ground to manage that. And secondarily, you're going to be moving to the classrooms to manage that. But right now, I'm of the opinion, and this sounds terrible, we don't even know, we don't know that. There's no good for honor out there to see how good or how challenging the next year is going to be. Hopefully, students are in class five days in life. So I guess I'll speak for myself. I'm on board with everything in there. Except for the D S student, just because I just can't really wrap my. Maybe it's I don't understand it, but since we're being asked to take a position, that's the position.
Great.
Yeah, I'm 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 in the same mindset of that. I guess I'd like to know more information about the dean of students, but also. You know, I, with the with the special ed piece, you know, do we need more than that point five? Do we need to look deeper into the data for that? Because we need to make sure that. If we are providing toses in the four elementary buildings, which I'm fully supportive of, because I know that those have an impact on student learning. If there is wiggle room to increase what we're thinking about the special ed population, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see a deeper dive with that, to see if there's something that could come out of that. With the dean of students. I've worked in a high school. I know what it's like at the high school. There's a lot of demands. That dean of students does pique my interest. But I think I would like to see more specific information on what would that person do beyond managing the building or or managing students. Moving forward. But that's my take on it. If if I hope that's clear. If if not, I could provide more information. So.
Lori, your thoughts?
The same. I feel I'm not good at understanding, but the toses are missing accomplish, and it makes sense to me that it doesn't seem like a solid investment. But the same question works with the dean of students.
I.
If if I had to vote yes or no, I'd probably say yes to toses and I'm.
Gary, any final comments? I I just, I guess, across the tosa, the coaches, that whole group of people that you're talking about. To see if if that's the right mix. I mean, I know this was done quickly, and so I know you guys know what you're doing. I trust that. But I want to feel comfortable that that's the right mix. Does it need to be heavier on the special ed side at the high school level? But the point five is okay at the elementary level. And if so, then where do we get that other thing for the high school? I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I I just think there's some, there's some variations on the thing that may need to be investigated. As a package of dollars and cents. Generally, yeah, with the exception of the dean of students thing, because I still don't get that.
You know, I'm going to just go back to the dean of students piece and. If we did ever, and I'm going forward that, you know, with that. If that worked out really well in here, we're sitting here three years later. There's going to be retirements. We are going to have assistant principals that are going to move on and take principal positions. If we feel that the feed of the dean of students. Is an effective position, maybe we don't hire an assistant principal that leads. You know, so one of our assistant principal takes a principal position because assistant principals don't last long. I think you're going to see a lot of movement in that in the next couple of years. I think you're going to see movement with retirement, with administrators at the secondary level as well, possibly. With some of those forms of movement. You know, if that dean of students position. Is working out as a an extreme benefit, maybe we look at realigning. Or if it isn't, maybe that's a time to eliminate it and just go and say, hey, we did this, it worked for X, Y, and Z. But now because of where we're at. We don't need it. The most difficult thing to me about all of this, I've never ever. Been able to look at so much money and be able to spend it quickly without knowing what the future is going to bring. You know, and I'm going to go back to that dean of students piece and my thought behind that is. We don't, our high school kids haven't been back four days. What are going to be some of the concerns and some of the issues of support that those kids may need from a dean of students, not just from disciplinary? But helping kids get back into that routine, helping families, working with families, working with kids to get back into that four-day routine. Maybe that's something that we could dive deeper into because. Yeah, our elementary kids are back and it's going very well. And there's also, you know, there's been concerns with, you know. For some students, it hasn't been easy. And if we don't know what the secondary is going to look like, and if we have someone in that position, could they? You know, dig deep into a project with that. That's an unpredictable piece, I think. What's out there that may bring so many questions?
Just conversely, looking at this simply. This is an opportunity to reimagine. How we manage students. In the high school. Now, whether that in in the roles were responsible, really, either, or do I think the dean of students is the answer? But this is an opportunity to, maybe we hire another A P and then we change how the A P's roles are now. It should be worth changing that things like that. I mean, it's really word of process rewards. It's unusual. We have an opportunity here. Do something different, and maybe it's time, given both the opportunity before us and the history of the last six months behind us. We have an opportunity to reimagine how the E P's, the principals. Yeah, go about their day, the day to day.
How's that for clear direction?
Clear as.
I think this has been a great conversation.
Yeah.
So I think more discussion on dean a little bit and. Toses. That you we've got, we go forward, but look more at special ed.
Yeah, just see what the mixes, whether it is, whether it is for at the elementary or there's something else that is a senior needed.
Because we have a three-year window, and we want to be the most efficient they possible. So that we're allocated.
But we've also heard that nothing is set in stone. We don't have anything. So so we're really not talking right now about actual numbers, actual expenses. It's concepts, and and I I think we agree that we need something for learning loss. We need something to go there. And it seems like we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, the proposal that we submitted tonight, the one that's been the most spelled out and the most input, had the most conversation. And the one that I think is going to have the greatest impact is the four M P S S.
You know, dealing with all the administrators having to talk this really quickly. I have confidence in our leaders here in this district that we move forward with the toses, and they're not being utilized in the right manner. That we're just big enough, we have the right manpower, but we're also too small enough that we can shift. We have collaborative departments with our teachers and the S T A contract. But I'm confident that if halfway through next year, we got a pretty good hand on things that tie. Leaders here can have, can shift into a different one. In terms of the toses, I just want to add the tosa interview process is going to be comprehensive in towns and things like that. It's not just going to be like, you're my favorite person and move on.
I I just see this into Mike's point. It's a very good point. I see, I see this as, there's a lot of flexibility in the plan. Within that three-year plan. And we may go with a certain model, and after one year, I mean, getting back to full return next year. We may say, hey, this has been great for this year, but now based on what we know now, what we don't know today. We've got, do we have that flexibility to make adjustments, you know, based on what we submit? So I see this as an opportunity for growth, an opportunity for flexibility. And an opportunity for people to really get creative and imaginative, really use their imaginations and. Come up with a product that's going to help with that learning loss.
And they they.
That that flexibility, I think, is critical in being able to have that.
So I guess to Jamie's point, or Jamie's over there, it's just like, well, I do. I'm certainly comfortable with it for trying to secure some teachers so that they can decide the process of business.
Rick, and this is probably going to be a, I don't know, as an example. Do we understand the checks and balances that will be in place? We submit this plan, here's our budget, here's how we're going to do it, blah, blah, blah. And then next year, we're. March, looking at this one, which really isn't where we need to be. You need to readjust, change it. You know, is there a check and balances that are going to allow us to do that, or we just, you know, have.
No, so so the process is you submit the application. All right, and then with that, you have, like I said, mentioned the budget, and then the budget narrative, okay? Throughout the process, you submit an F S 25, so you spent so much, you submitted an F S 25 to get the reimbursement. If, and they've, in the webinar on May 18th, they fully expect that these plans are going to change. They fully expect that. So what would happen is if we're going through and we're saying this isn't working, or we want to shift. Money from one area to another, we submit what's called an F S 10 A, so it's an amendment to the plan. They essentially reapprove it. And we're good to go moving forward.
Thank you. That's huge, that flexibility to do that. Take the predict, you put something in, put something in stone. For three years without flexibility.
And these are. Coaches for the elementary level. Been in multiple meetings with the elementary principals and Ty, and they have. Baselines that they'll set to to measure whether they're effectiveness. That was one of the things we talked about today. So it's not just throwing money there. Well, maybe it worked, maybe it didn't. How are we going to measure that? And we can certainly come back with more details about what those are. But, you know, this is kind of the broad brush of. The thinking, but then drilling down and giving you more information is certainly something that we can do in concert with Andrea.
So what what I would like to see a- as we progress is. Mile markers that that say, here we are, this is where we think we're going to be. Plan for the exit. In the exit, maybe, okay, we're done with the toses, or. Let us know a year into it saying, hey, this might be great. We want to look into this. We might consider it further on, but but give us. Input as we go along. So so come three years from now. The rug isn't pulled out from under us and we have to lose out on something that may have been really good. Or come up with something that we uh. We weren't ready to pay for.
And I envision a presentation for part of education, based on all that we've talked about so far, just so you can see the fruits of what's taken place, and so you can have some greater insight. So we're to. You know, we had a conversation that you gave before. I envision us in the coming weeks sharing with you, based on the feedback that we received, here are some of the things that we're looking to modify and to adopt. This is very helpful, thank you.
Provisions to student policies. Jonathan, I think you're right.
You get 10 minutes.
Again, typical with our policy presentations, this is a a very short. PowerPoint, really just a slide to talk about the five policies. That came out of the work of the Equity Committee that I chair. This included stakeholders, students, community members, and board members. Who had input on some of the changes to these policies that really affect. The students. In a manner such as like 73 tent school conduct and discipline incorporating language with respect to restorative practices. Student dress code, incorporating language regarding making the efforts to include equity with the enforcement of that student dress code. Others such as the suspension of students, you know, provide some information there. Additional information with regard to the suspension of students, such as defining the term, so they know what an insubordinate person, a student may be, or have an idea of. What they would need to comply with. Now granted, a lot of that is also included in the student code of conduct, which is. Also come forth in our last meeting. The alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances. All of the changes within that, except for what's contained in the first paragraph, were done by the Equity Committee. I was the one that added the language regarding cannabis and other marijuana products. After our discussion on the code of conduct. So I'm thinking of adding something similar after conversations with a high school principal, the middle school principal, and an elementary principal. That having that clarity in the in the policy now, so it's consistent with the code of conduct and what we put forth. But also the code of conduct explains. In a in an easier read fashion, that marijuana and THC products are included under the definition of cannabis, while we still work on a definition of cannabis to be included in the student. And then 7330 searches and interrogations. A lot of the language that the Equity Committee took are these provisions that would be probably included as we revise that policy when we redo the 7,000 series later in the year. But for the changes in the first couple paragraphs that changed the term from reasonable cause to reasonable suspicion. The actual standard for the search is reasonable suspicion. I'm not sure how cause got in there in a in a prior. It may have been reasonable cause at some point 20 years ago. I I don't know what it was at that point. But that, making those terms consistent with the inclusion of the reasonable suspicion standard that the Equity Committee wanted to have in there. To be clear for students. What is, what administrators have to go through to defectuate one of those searches. So those all combined together are the work of the Equity Committee. I can answer questions about the language contained therein, and I believe Ty can help answer questions if you have any about how the committee worked process and and went through the changes.
Real quick on the dress code one.
Sure.
I think the change was adding a sentence and stuff, and I just, I, as I was reading it, I'm kind of going. What what did we? what, what did we, what did we add to the policy by adding that statement? I mean, I understand we want to reference C R E and those types of things. I didn't see the value add in putting that into the dress code.
You, I'm sorry, Gary, you sure people, you didn't see.
Yeah, I didn't see the value add. I, I, I see a sense that's kind of thrown in there and it feels like almost out of place that gets, hey, let's throw something in there that talks about the R E and, and equitable, equitable things. And I didn't see what the add was to.
So this is, um, when Jonathan provided the code of conduct update, we said next year that we're making some more substantial changes with a larger stakeholder group from probably September to December. This would be kind of setting the stage for this work that we also want to do with the dress code next year. Well, we can wait if you'd like to wait until that, that's.
Yeah, I, I, again, I just didn't see where it added anything to the policy. I mean, I'm looking for policy, you go, all right, we have to change it because, you know, reasonable search and then those things. But I didn't see where that statement added anything to the policy. And then the policy is pretty straightforward before him.
I think from conversation with students that we work with, they don't feel like the dress code really speaks to them. And, and I think not that this placated them, but this was, they saw some end rose in some of our efforts, knowing where we want to go long term. So I, I would say that the statement didn't come from the Equity Committee. It really came from the students that we work with and the students.
So Jonathan, in the home language means for, for families where English is not the primary language, it'll be said whole, okay. Yes. Other question that I had under the searches. Is there a definition anywhere of school officials? Who, who exactly can be authorized to conduct a search? Can it, is it a teacher or is it? So, so what actually defines that? Is that defined anywhere? What school officials are authorized to conduct searches of students and their belongings? Who is that person? And, and how, how is that controlled? So we know who that actually is.
So I think the interpretation, uh, the inclusion of the school official term is coming from the newer Erie one policy. From the first paragraph, it's a school district employee only when the school district employee has reasonable suspicion. Typically that is going to be a security or an administrator, not going to be implemented. Implemented by the summer.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that doesn't say that this.
No, that doesn't say. I'm just saying how it's been implemented. I, I, if there is not within this, a, a definition of school official, we would need to add something like that and update the policy. The difficulty is, we did not. My participation and my understanding of the Equity Committee was not looking at every potential change that is incorporated coming from the Erie one suggested policies. I think they extracted provisions that would, the committee thought would be helpful for the students and the community to understand. So if you would like, I could work on adding a, a definition of a school official or adding some of that to it to help supplement in that knowledge.
It really should be the building principal, I feel, and the building, the builder principals should be the only ones who's providing consent for an AP to conduct a search. So I think the school official really should be changed to the building, the building principal.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it would hurt to have that information.
And, and is there any thought to having a two person rule?
Oh, it's always two people. Yeah. It's always, oh, and you're.
I don't see it in here. That's what I'm saying. Well, is our policy, does the board say there must be two people involved in any search of the students or students belong?
Yeah, we can revise that.
Yeah, we can revise that. And that's always been the advice of when I was an attorney for Boses, that always have two people present during interrogation.
I get that. I just, but if we're going to change our policy.
Yep.
You know, take them all the way.
I'm just saying, two thousand eighteen, the school official must have done that a lot of touch. So there is precedent out there where it's happening different way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the, the, this is a first read and, and it's a goal that this is outside of the Erie one policy review. This is something we want to act upon at our next meeting, correct? So, so this is an incremental that, that we're putting in the bin with all the Erie one. We want to get this out there. So I think with that, we definitely want to include the, the building principal. I think that's the ideal scenario there to identify that. And I don't, I, I couldn't imagine anyone on the Equity Committee, Committee that would have take issue with that.
Is there any reason why we never had it before? That was at the beginning of the policy, that's it all, like school district employees make conduct. And then we, we added language, it's not school officials. Is there a reason why the old company didn't limit it to the building principal?
I could see to, to Mike's point, I could see a situation where coaches turn out your pocket. It may not have, it may not happen now. It may have happened before or it, but it's a discussion. Is the athletic director authorized to authorize a search like that? Or in a situation where students are away on a class on a trip? You know, who's the authorizing official at that point?
Well, they're just on a, they're on a school bus.
Well, what if they're in New York City or Massachusetts or, I mean, there, there's, there's, it may not always be the building principal.
Too specific with building principal, then what happens if for some reason the building principal is not available?
Or does it mean?
Yeah, building principal or there does it mean.
And, and I didn't think about the athletic director. There may be times where, and the athletic director is in a position where it's so I think regardless, I think a, a, a definition has to get in there for, for what school official is. I, I, I don't like the idea that anyone can do it.
Um, Jonathan, one question I had is, um, so I'm under questioning of students by school officials. And the second paragraph that talks about should the questioning of students by school officials focus on the actions of one particular student, the student being questioned if possible and private by the appropriate school administrator, the student's parent guardian may be contacted. So when a student's questioned, the parent may be contacted. Then I go back up to the, the, um, search part. And there's nothing in there that says that if a student is searched, that the parent would be contacted. Am I getting too picky with that? Because I, I guess if, if my kid is being searched, I want to, I want, whether they find something or not, I kind of want to, personally, I would want to know. I would hope that's happening, but would that give us further protection? So this, the scope of search with a new language, there's really nothing in there. How a parent would be contacted, but with the questioning, there's a statement that does say a parent may be contacted. I, I almost. I, I almost think that. But maybe I'm off in a whole nother mindset of thinking, but if my child's being searched, whether they find something or not, I want to know. Because I don't want my child coming home and saying, oh, I got searched today by a principal. They didn't find anything. I guess I'd want to know in advance. It's, I don't know if that's something that needs to be in the policy or not.
Feature practice. We always contact the parents before we search and then sometimes they would want to be present. So we would wait till they're.
Okay.
And it actually helps.
So they're contacted, a parent is contacted before.
That was a practice, yeah.
Okay, that's good to know.
But then did that go in our policy?
Does that need to be in the, would that be something that should be here in the policy?
Regulations.
Yeah, well, we have the regulations.
Okay.
The I don't.
So the real question is, do we think it should be in our policy?
Yeah, I'd have to review the regulations and then, you know, we don't want it to be too constrictive to certain, you know, practices or situations, but.
It should be in the regulations. And if it isn't, I mean, if you want it, your policy, you can have it in your policy, but it definitely should be in regulations because it's kind of a procedural
Right.
part of implementation of a policy.
But it just kind of stood out to me that questioning, it's in the policy for questioning, but it's not in the policy for a search, that the parent may be contacted. That's just my, that kind of jumped out at me when I was reading.
Jonathan, you got a feel of where we're going with this? So, so when you come back or, or make some, some tweaks to it and share with us.
Primarily to this policy, the searches and interrogations. A second read on everything for further consideration to make sure the rest is good. Yes.
Yeah. And this is just me being an editor. I didn't even do a really close, close read of it. So like I was picking up on some typos and things like that. Is there a way to get a word version of this that I could actually edit?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll send them all to you.
Again, I just, if we're, if we're reviewing this work, it should look professional. So we shouldn't have typos and, and those types of things in it.
Uh, and my, I did not look at every word because I was looking at incorporating what the.
I didn't look at every word either.
But I was also under the, my, my thought with processing these was that they would still get another set of eyes through the, through our normal process when we hit the seven thousand series. Just with these modifications to the base level policy.
Okay.
Uh, because the searches and interrogation and the school conduct and discipline, I believe, have more changes to be made from the Erie ones to get the language.
That's fine. I, again, just from a professional parent, when we put these things out there.
All right. So thank you.
Ty, thank you to the, uh, your, your committee. A lot of great suggestions here.
This actually is from the aftermath, you may recall a year ago, almost to the day when we had four students present to you, at the Board of Education, as one of their requests and recommendations as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rick, it's you again, financial report.
Yeah. So I don't know if you guys knew, but it's Jamie's birthday today. So I gotta keep this free so she can get home.
Are you going to start? Are you going to lead?
No.
I can make serious.
There we go. Okay, so, um, big picture, I don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. I just, from a revenue perspective, I just want to share with you that if it weren't for the fact that we didn't account for the ninety to twenty percent withholdings. Um, and we had a couple of one time hits, we'd be almost dead even with what we had projected. Okay, so we're fortunate that we did what we did and made the decision we did because you're seeing about a five hundred thousand dollar surplus because in large part of the twenty percent that was withheld, we didn't recognize, we're now recognizing it. So I just want to bear that out because I think it's important. Now, from the expenditure side, again, um, many of that savings is from the benefits. It seems to be from TRS right now. But again, Nicole is going to do an analysis to project that out. We'll have a better sense come, uh, the second quarter in June. Uh, and salaries is the other area where I need to do a deep dive and should have a better idea of what was occurring, um, come June. Big picture, uh, we're looking to have a surplus of revenue over expenses, well, eight hundred, ninety thousand at this point in time. School lunch still, it's I'm still trying to figure out a, a good methodology to share an apples to apples comparison. At the end of the day, we're still going to be in the red.
I put that on the block for April. I'm like, I'm ready for all. Really?
Well, I didn't print it in color. Maybe that's.
Colorblind, what's matter?
Rick, what is it? What, how is that two thousand four, two thousand five? I mean, it's just like.
So what, what happens with excess cost aid is with the rate setting unit, it takes years for them to analyze all the data. Um, and then they go through and they look at, um, we also have an opportunity to refile stacks. So you have all these different things happening and ultimately it was a change going back to four, five.
Eighteen year?
Yep. I'm not complaining.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, so I'll end it up any questions you have.
A, a motion to approve the, Gary, second, Mike, all in favor, five oh.
Happy birthday, David.
Happy birthday.
Should we say?
Meeting evaluation, things went great. Birthdays are great. Let's be done with this. Motion to move to executive session, Mr. Maselli. Oh, actually, you wanna?
Oh.
Good set. Do it.
First, Mr. Maselli, second, or actually first, Laurie, second, Mr. Maselli, all in favor, five oh. And look at this, what's coming in. So at nine eighteen, we are leaving executive session. I have a motion for.
Make a motion that the AP would be for non-unit members, that non-unit employees are.
First, Laurie, second, Mr. Bracken, all in favor, five oh. Thank you all.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Bracken, motion to adjourn, second, Mr. Vinkie, all in favor, five oh, nine nineteen.
The other four didn't raise their hands too.